Good evening, members of County Council as well as the citizens of Williamsburg County. Can we get a sound check on all of our social media sites? And also at this time, if do we have anyone that is on teleconference line? Remember, citizens can call in at 877-309-2073. That access code is 590-380-589. We are open to the public with a maximum of 25-plus people can be in the chambers at this time. As we begin to open up for our public hearing, understand that no one that is on the social media websites or on the teleconferences will be allowed to make comments due to the fact the building is open to the public. Officially, I'm opening up this, opening up for public hearing. Anyone that is participating in the public hearing forum will have one minute to make any comments. We would take, again, we would not take comments via teleconference or social media. So the public hearing is open for ordinance number 2021-13 and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax, tax of taxes and Cooperative, Inc., Tax Incentive Agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, Santee Electric Cooperative and acting for itself, one or more affiliates and/or other project sponsors collectively, collectively the company pursuant to which the county show covenant to accept certain negotiating fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county, the project and/or two other matters related to. That is the first item that is up for public hearing. Citizens may make their comments. You will have one minute again to do so. Do we have any comments regarding the ordinance number 2021-13? We also have in-house our county attorney as well as our economic development executive director, Gillian Fryerson. So if anyone has any comments, you may walk to the podium. Please state your name and district. Please walk to the podium and please state your name and your district. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Anita James, and I just want to know, can you explain what that means?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Fryerson.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Wright, members of council. The standard fee in lieu of taxes is a statutory incentive for businesses that makes the state of South Carolina more attractive for recruitment. South Carolina in the nation has one of the highest corporate tax rates in the nation. And so what this does is if you own a house, you pay taxes at a 4% assessment. If you are fortunate to have two houses, that second house is assessed at a 6%. Businesses are assessed at a 10.5% assessment rate. So with the fee in lieu, we, that incentive takes that, that corporate tax level from a 10.5% to a 6%. So it makes it more profitable for companies when they, when they receive that incentive to invest in our state, invest in our counties, invest in our communities.
Thank you. Any other questions, ma'am? Any other questions from anyone in the audience? Hearing none. Our next order open for public hearing is for a public hearing to address the availability for review and comment of Ori County's Home Consortium 2020-2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. We do have a representative that is here today that will discuss this, and you may ask any questions or comment in regards to what he has to say.
I'm Michael Dobson with Ori County Community Development. I am here on behalf of the Ori County Home Consortium. At first, just like to thank Dr. Wright and members of Williamsburg County Council for letting me have the opportunity here to hold a public hearing. I really appreciate it. Here on behalf of, I'll be bouncing back and forth, on behalf of the consortium to present our draft consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, which is our, just our annual report on things we've been doing throughout the year.
Excuse me, Sergeant, your mic turned on.
I'm probably just up there.
Okay.
Okay. So this is for the Home Consortium's annual report. Okay, I'll do that. Hear me?
Very good. Thank you.
This is for the Home Consortium's annual report of accomplishments for things we've done over the past year, and it covers three different grant sources, two of which are for exclusive to unincorporated Ori County, which is the community development block grant, which is primarily designated to assisting low to moderate income persons. And we're also partnered with the city of Myrtle Beach on that grant. The second is the Emergency Solutions Grant, which is designed to help homeless persons and those at risk of homelessness, and that grant is, covers the area of Ori County. The third grant is the Home Investment Partnerships Program. Williamsburg County is a participant at a consortium in this. We're together, we're a three-county consortium that covers Ori County, Georgetown County, Williamsburg County with the exclude, in all the local jurisdictions with the exclusion of Surfside Beach, North Myrtle Beach, Barkley Fakers, and Polys Island, but it's all the other towns within the three-county area. So, and that grant is designed to create and retain affordable housing throughout the region. So this report covers our activity from this past year from July 1, 2020 through June 30 of this, this year, 2021. This is the first of three opportunities for public hearings. The next one will be tomorrow at the Lockmont Regional Council of Governments at 3:00, and then the third one will be Thursday at the Ori County Community Development Office in Conway. I'll go through the three, three grants one by one. The first one, CDBG, during this year, Ori County expended a total of $996,419 towards multiple activities to benefit low to moderate income persons, including housing rehabilitation, public services, and public infrastructure. This year, we spent about $300,000 on housing rehab, and were able to complete 12 of those projects. We also have eight currently in progress. And so that, that grant was able to assist with home repairs for a low to moderate income persons that live in their households. And two of those benefited those at 0 to 30% of the area median income, maybe of extremely low income. Four helped those that were at 30 to 50% of the area median income or low income. And six were considered moderate income, which was 50 to 80% of their median income. This is an example of one rehab we did in the Garden City area. You can see before and after. We also funded public services, which included grants to Eastern Carolina Housing Organization, who provided benefits connection for homeless persons. They were able to help 72 persons. SOS Care, who funded life skills training for 12 individuals with adults with autism and other developmental disabilities. We also funded Children's Recovery Center, who did forensic and medical exams for 76 abused children. And we also helped New Directions of Ori County, who used CDBG funding to acquire 88 shelter beds. Finally, we also funded an infrastructure project in the city of Myrtle Beach called Charlie's Place. This was for the final phase of this project, which is redevelopment of a former motel into a community center. In this phase of the project, installed a paver driveway and some other on-site improvements. The second grant that this covers, these are all funding grants under, under this report, is the Emergency Solutions Grant, which benefits homeless persons. We expended $189,572 this year, and were able to help 113 persons through rapid rehousing, which moves people who are literally homeless into permanent housing as quickly as possible. Homelessness Prevention, which seeks to provide assistance for rental arrears to keep people who are in danger of being evicted from becoming homeless. Emergency Shelter, which includes overnight motel and hotel stays for homeless individuals. HMIS, which is the data tracking of those assisted through the program, and administrative calls. Finally, we expended $535,000 on the home program, which again is designed to create and retain affordable housing units. This year, we completed three homeowner new construction units, and we also have 10 units currently in progress. Six of those are homeowner new construction units. One is owner occupied rehabilitation, and then three were rental new construction for formal housing. The three units that are rental should be completed by the end of the month or nearing completion. There's, again, there's six homeownership units that are currently in progress. Two of them will be finished up in the next month. One of them actually wrapped up and closed today. And we also have one owner occupied rehabilitation in progress at this time, and we'll have another one moving to procurement pretty soon. This is an example of a homeowner new construction that we did in, outside of Conway, partnering with Habitat. And you can see before and after there. So as a part of presenting this summary of accomplishments, this caper, we are holding a public comment period, which runs through August 20th, and we'll also present the draft caper to our County Council Administration Committee on August 24th, and to full Ori County Council on September 7th. This time, I'd like to open the floor for, with permission, for verbal comments and for questions on the caper.
Can Williamsburg County still submit projects for the home program?
Yes, we should have a, we split up the processes. We should have a homeowner and tenant-based rental assistance round opening up probably next month, and that'll cover owner occupied rehab and homeowner new construction and tenant-based rental assistance. And that'll be open to subrecipients and developers to bring forth projects for review. The rental side of things, we are restructuring, and we will be moving to a, to a rolling review basis and not just an annual solicitation. We're still restructuring that, and we hope to get that out on the street pretty soon. At that point, developers will be able to bring their projects as they're construction ready.
Question, question here.
Yes, sir.
When was the genesis of this program? When did this program start?
Nationally, the home program started under the Cranston-Gonzales Act of 1992. Previously, home plans were available through the Lockmont Home Consortium, and Georgetown County was the lead at that point. Ori County assumed the lead in 2018, and we're currently acting as the participating jurisdiction. So we're entering our fourth year as the, as the lead agency.
Okay, and this has always been open to Williamsburg County?
Yes.
And we, have we applied previously?
Well, the, it would be a subrecipient or developer bringing forth the project, but not the county government itself, and we have not had any applications since we've taken up the project.
I have another question. And as far as citizens from Williamsburg County, when they call the telephone number, how long is it often before someone contacts them back? And after that, what's normally the process?
Well, we're not really accepting applications directly from citizens. If that makes sense. We fund subrecipients and developers, and they would bring forth their projects and have, is, I don't believe there's a Habitat affiliate in Williamsburg County. Am I correct on that?
We use the Georgetown.
Use Georgetown? Okay. Well, as an example, that Georgetown County would bring forth a project for Williamsburg County and line up the homeowners for that, and then we would review the project.
Dr. Wright, we have never applied before. You said, will we be applying this time?
You're right. Yes, we will. We do have a, another member in the audience who would like to ask, make a comment.
Yes, and to answer some of what I wanted to ask is, in Councilman Wilson's question, and I wanted to know about the individuals in qualifying versus developers. So this is pretty much financed through developers? Okay, so if I have someone, and I'm speaking for a municipality, the town of Gurleyville, if we already have somebody that's in the process of developing homes for, I think it's seniors, maybe low to moderate income folks, can they too benefit? Do you do private assistance also?
For a, for a profit home?
Yes.
Yes, we could possibly fund a private for-profit developer. We, that would, it sounds like that would be for rental, and that would be under the rental round coming up. With that, we would review the history of the developer and their experience and make an assessment of capacity and review the project as well to evaluate financial feasibility, that kind of thing. But yes, we, we look at it from a developer and a project basis versus an individual basis. So we would fund the project, and the project would have individual homeowner, individual, those assisted lined up through that.
Okay, let me ask one final question. What would be, what would be the, I guess, maybe most feasible or the quickest way of doing this directly with the developer himself, or is it something that the municipality itself could apply for?
This grant's designed to fund for-profit, nonprofit developers, so it would be best to partner with one of those to bring forth the application instead of the, for the county government. So we would fund the developer as part of that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Thank you, sir, for attending.
Thank you very much. And I would just say we have a comment period open until August 20th, and you can submit either to my email, dobson.michael@ori county.org, or in person to our office at 100 Elm Street or mail at the same address. And there's a draft version of the caper available on our website at ori county.org/departments/cdbg if you'd like to review it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no other questions for public hearing, going once, going twice, public comment period is over. We are going to open up our regularly scheduled council meeting for today and call it to order. Our invocation will be, will be provided by Councilman Wilson.
Let us pray. Eternal Father, we want to thank you once again for giving us this opportunity to come to this appointed place. We thank you, dear Lord, for the citizens of this county. We thank you for the employees of this county. We then, dear Lord, ask you to lead us, guide us, and direct us as we go into the business of this county. Give us the knowledge that we will need to work for the citizens of this county. In all blessings, we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Wilson. We need a motion for approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled council meeting that was conducted on August 2nd, 2021.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. For the next ordinance, please take note that Councilman Floyd will be abstaining from the vote due to a conflict of interest, and that will be documented and noted in the minutes. We have ordinance number 2021-13, ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of the fee in lieu of tax incentive agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and Santee Electric Cooperative. What is the pleasure of council?
Motion that we approve and adopt the, the ordinance, Madam Chair.
Second.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. We also have second reading of ordinance number 2021-14, and ordinance authorizing the issuance of sale of not exceeding 1.6 million, 6, 1.6 million 75,000 obligation refund bond, Series 2021 or such other appropriate series designation of Williamsburg County, South Carolina, fixing the form and details of the bond delegated to the county supervisor and chair of county council, and certain authorized related to the bond, providing for the payment of the bond and disposition of the proceeds thereof and the matter related thereto. What is the pleasure of council for second reading?
Motion for second reading.
Second.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. We have first reading, which we only need a motion for a first reading of ordinance authorizing an amendment to agreement for development of the joint county industrial park dated July 19, 2012, by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and Florence County, South Carolina, in order to expand the boundaries of the joint county industrial and business park to include certain property owned by Santee Electric Cooperative as sponsors and one or more sponsors affiliated and other matters thereto. Just first reading title only.
Motion for first reading.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next order of business are resolutions. Also, please be advised, take note that Councilman Floyd will be abstaining from the vote due to a conflict of interest for resolution, resolution only for 2020-10. A resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax incentive agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, Santee Electric Cooperative acting for itself. What is the pleasure of council?
Motion to approve and adopt resolution.
Second.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by raising your hand.
May I have supervisor for the record just note I was abstained from all votes concerning Santee Electric?
Yes, sir.
As in the past. I just want that placed on the record due to my conflict.
Yes, sir. Okay. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried for resolution number 2021-10. Next order of business, Attorney Jinkinson, he will add light to this, but I will read that resolution, which is 2021-13, a resolution to express Williamsburg County Council's request that the South Carolina General Assembly take the necessary action to continue to allow local governments to collect user fees that fund critical needs such as public safety and infrastructure.
What we have tonight is this resolution to ask the General Assembly to pass an act allowing local governments to collect user fees. This was all, goes back to history on it, is back in the early 1990s, we started passing user fees, for example, on our roads, and that's, now talking to that, but we also have user fees for our landfills and a number of other sources that would possibly be affected by this decision in, up in Greenville County, where it's Burns versus Greenville County. Mr. Burns brought a case and said, you can't collect any more than $15. There was a cutoff period from the time it was originally enacted until some later provisions came into effect, and so Greenville County was collecting, I think, $30, and the Supreme Court said, you can't charge that fee over $15. The rationale is important. Greenville is a huge metropolitan county adjacent to I-85, I-26, has all kinds of roads owned by the county, many of which are paved, and many of which are used by industries, people from out of state. Our Supreme Court said, wait a minute, you're taxing a user fee is really a tax because what you're doing is making the taxpayers pay this fee, and all kind of people are using these roads from all over, and it shouldn't apply for that reason. Now, we have done a lot of research on our user fees. If you use the rationale of the Supreme Court as it applied to Greenville County, we've done some research and prepared some arguments, because, I'm sorry, we don't have an interstate going through Williamsburg County. All the roads that we maintain are dirt roads. Nobody uses these roads except school buses, mail carriers to take mail to people's houses, the farmers who farming on that road who live here, and the people who live on the road. There's very little, or what we would call inconsequential, use of the roads by the general public outside of Williamsburg County. We think that, that we don't fall under that rule, but that's another day for that argument. But I just wanted you to understand how the Supreme Court arrived at its decision. Another way to look at it is, how about our garbage? We charge a user fee, but nobody outside the county uses our landfill other than people in the county. So I think an exception would apply to that user fee, and the other user fees we charge that would, in my opinion, would have an excellent legal argument to the Supreme Court that, okay, we heard what you said, but it doesn't apply to us. Now, what this resolution asks is, okay, General Assembly, you created this monster. We want you to fix it. And this resolution comes at the recommendation of the South Carolina Association of Counties. They're asking all of the counties, because it affects every county in the state, and a substantial portion of our revenue. We go broke with, if this is what the problem is, okay, and if it's hell to us. And what they are saying is, we want you to fix 6-1-300 subsection fix, six, that user fee charge, we want you to make it legal so that case does not apply to us or any other county in the state, because it creates an onerous burden. You, you created the problem, it's caused the problem, now fix the problem that you started with, okay? We've been following the law, but now the law according to the Supreme Court says there's a problem with it. Okay, the only way to fix it is either appeal something to the Supreme Court, which will take a long time, or fix it in the next legislative session. And this resolution joins, as far as I know, I don't know any county that is not, are not adopting this resolution, saying, please fix this problem that's been created by Burns versus Greenville County. So what we're doing is asking you to pass a resolution that Williamsburg County Council is in support of the legislation that would preserve user fees as a vital source of local revenue, and requests that all members of the General Assembly take action to ensure that the home rule- that the home rule law, which has been the law since 1974, is protected and the appropriate legislation is enacted to preserve this important financial county resource during the 124th session of the General Assembly starting this January. Any questions?
You mentioned the Association of Counties.
Yes, sir.
Have they sent us anything in writing in terms of, of what you-
This resolution.
The resolution.
All we did was put Williamsburg County's name on it.
That's right.
They wrote the resolution.
Correct.
Saying, oh, you know, just fill your county's name on it and pass it as we recommend it. This is the writing.
Just a comment, Mr. Jenkinson.
Yes, sir.
I think you eloquently put what it said, but just to simplify, South Carolina Associations did send this to us as a result of the recent Supreme Court Burns decision.
That's correct.
I think it's important for people to understand that what the Burns decision says was that Greenville, that some of these counties were passing user fees, basically guise as a tax to which the citizens were receiving no additional benefit, is what it was saying. This resolution, the next to the last paragraph says, "The above solution does not increase county's revenue-raising authority beyond its ability prior to the recent Burns decision, and therefore does not constitute a new fee or tax." And so it doesn't give us the authority to increase any type of tax, it's just the fees that we had put in place in years past, that they would be valid and that they would not be struck down by the Burns decision. Is that your understanding, Mr. Jenkinson?
That's correct. We're not putting any new tax out there, we're just trying to keep the status quo because, and, and, and that's very well said, counsel.
And, and that was the request, the South Carolina Association of Counties, my understanding is requested all 46 counties in the state to pass this exact resolution in light of the most recent Burns decision that I think came out in June, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkinson.
Pleasure of counsel.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2021-13.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the adoption of resolution number 2021-13, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. Our next resolution is resolution, let me make sure. This is right. We got to change the agenda, we got our, our numbers kind of mixed up. So this, this resolution is to, the resolution to recognize, recognizing the month of September 21 as sickle cell anemia disease awareness in Williamsburg County. So they have drafted up a resolution, which is in your package, and they want us to designate this month for sickle cell anemia disease awareness in our county. What is the pleasure of counsel?
Motion to adopt resolution, Madam Supervisor.
Second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of resolution 2021-14, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. The next order of, the next resolution that's in order, let me just start by saying that the, this resolution also, in addition to the one that Mr. Jenkinson talked about, does not bind this body or any members of council to any increases for any specific group. This particular resolution is specific to the fire department, it's merely to support Bill 401 requesting that all members of South Carolina General Assembly take action to ensure the enactment of this critical piece of legislation during the 124th, 124th general, session of General Assembly. Again, this resolution was taken directly from the Association of Counties, and all we did was attach our name to it. This is, they have asked that each county get on board to passing of this particular resolution. And this resolution basically states, it's a resolution to express Williamsburg County Council's request that the General Assembly allow counties to increase the millage cap set by section 6-1-320 of the South Carolina Code of Law in the limited manner set forth out by Senate Bill 401. Please also be advised that our Williamsburg County Fire Chief is not in the audience today to support this because he is on quarantine, at home quarantine due to COVID-19 exposure. In the audience, we do have members of our Williamsburg County Fire Department. With this bill will allow, the bill, and I said again, council is not up to any, does not have an obligation to increase any millage or any fees, but the bill itself will allow the county to raise revenue to support additional fire personnel. It will also allow for the increase of full-time personnel from 11 to 20 people that, that are needed, and it will keep the Williamsburg County, Williamsburg County more competitive with our Claritin County partners, our Chester, our Marion's, and our Jasper Counties, and our Dillon County. It will also allow the purchase of outdated equipment that the Williamsburg County Fire Department has, has had on, in its arsenal for the last 20 to 30 years. It will also allow the repair of 23 fire stations for which Williamsburg County has the most fire to state, fire stations in our population group. It will also support the operating budget from the budget that is currently more than 20 years old. Williamsburg County, again, as I stated earlier, has the most fire stations. This will also allow for a short-term solution for a one-time millage increase which will expire after two years. Again, this is just taking this, allowing or asking that our delegation be allowed to push this forward during the general, during the General Assembly. Pleasure of counsel.
Madam Supervisor.
Yes, sir.
The way I'll read this, this is South Carolina Code of Law's Senate Bill 401. I hadn't read that bill. Is that a more, most recent bill in the South Carolina Association of Counties is asking all 46 counties to adopt Bill 401?
Yes, sir. It came out in the same Friday report as the fees did.
And 401 basically gives the counties the authority under section 61320. It actually gives you the authority to increase millage based on deficiencies from prior years, catastrophic events, purchase of property, purchase of equipment, court orders, it's a vast array of reasons that you could, you could increase millage.
Okay.
But this is not saying today, just so everyone out there understands, we're not increasing millage, we're just passing a Senate bill. So in the future, there were ever a need, the county would have the authority to do so, and all 46 counties have been requested to pass this Senate bill, is that correct?
This is correct. In fact, the language comes directly from the Association of Counties, and all we did was insert Williamsburg County Council in it. Is that correct, Mr. Jenkinson? Pleasure of counsel.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2021-50.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting resolution 2021-15, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. Our next order of business is for, let me see. We have an appearance, we're going to go ahead and get that over with, from Ms. Winford Reese, recruiter and program assistant of the South Carolina Youth Challenge Academy.
Good evening, everyone, and I thank you for your time. I am W.L. Reese. I am, as she said, a recruiter and a program assistant with the South Carolina Youth Challenge Academy. I gave you all some material about our program. One of the requests, as I asked, is that you put it on your website, if you could, because we are a state agency, so this is, we a state agency connection. This program is a free program that is, every county in South Carolina is eligible for. Can I remove this for a second?
Sure.
Okay. Every county in South Carolina participates in this program. It is a quasi-military academy for 16 to 18-year-old young people. We work with those young people that are dropping out of school, intruency issues, maybe experiencing some adverse childhood experiences, things that are making it difficult for a young person to finish their, their education. We are part of Richland County School District 1, so if a young person does enroll in our program and they're accepted, they would just have to withdraw, just say, from Williamsburg County Schools District and enroll in Richland County School District 1. We are considered an adult education program, even though we're quasi-military. We're trying to get credit recovery, but that's a process that has to go through state legislation. What we're offering these young people is a chance to finish their education. We're offering them a chance to get some job skills like SERVE safe, forklift certification, and some other things that we have their resume writing, public speaking, things that give these young people some confidence to continue on with their life, while giving them the discipline that they need to continue in the right direction. We do work with pre-trial intervention programs, we do work with DJJ. The only criteria that's really significant in that aspect is that a person cannot have committed a felony crime or have a felony charge. Now, if they just have some juvenile stuff like smoking weed, riding around in their mom's or dad's car when they shouldn't be, those are minor issues. We can handle that, but we do not handle felonies. It's just something that the National Guard Bureau of the United States, who funds this program 75%, they're not going to allow it. The governor is in charge of, of giving the funds from the state to our program, which comes through Governor McMaster, through General, Major General McCarty, who is the Adjutant General of the South Carolina National Guard. These programs are national. The biggest thing I want to emphasize to you is free to y'all's community. It's not costing y'all anything. You don't have to put any funds, there's no millage, anything like that. These funds are already in place for any of the young people that we get. We're always suited to take up to 140 young people, male and female, 16 to 18, twice a year. We have two cycles. Cycles start from January to June and from July to December. We are in a active situation right now, cycle 47, so we actually have cadets. Now, to add to the, this COVID situation, we were still open because we are on a military installation, so we can isolate kids. So if they, one of them comes up positive for, for COVID or something, we have the facilities, the space, and the security that we can secure a person right there and make sure that a parent is satisfied that their child is safe. We have a full-time medical staff. We have EMS that are 30 seconds away from any place on that installation. McCready Training Center is part of the 52,000-acre land of Fort Jackson, we're in the southeast corner of that, of Fort Jackson's main federal facilities. So when we get those kids, they're safe, they're ours, and we have them for five and a half months as part of the residential phase. One of the things that we emphasize is that when these young people graduate our program, they can come back to the second portion, which is on the backside of those pamphlets that I gave you, which is the job challenge. This is where we want our kids to come back from the community and go to, to the job challenge. We have a partnership with Midlands Technical College in Columbia, where these young people can come back, go to the job challenge portion of our program, which again is free. They can go to Windlands Tech, they can take welding, IT, HVAC, certified nursing assistant, construction, sound engineering, and there's a host of other things that they mix in or out depending on what the young people are trying to seek. The bottom line is, this is a free program for your community. I've gone to Georgetown, I go to Ory County, I've been all over this southern Piedmont, low coast area. I just want you guys, if you could, please put it on your website, let your community know that this is a resource for those children that we're losing. South Carolina loses 39 to 4100, 10th to 12th grade students every year, and I don't even know what the next statistic is going to be for COVID. But we are a viable program, we are open, and we're not shutting down, and we have everything in place. We even partnered with DHEC, comes and give us, give our children test every other Friday. I've had my nose probed 10 times already, so I'm used to it now. We have things that cover these young people. Bottom line, it's a free program, and every child in this community that's 16, 18, has that opportunity in Williamsburg County. Yes, sir.
The, the funds that come from the state per student, the per student allocation, if those students would be referred to you, those funds will automatically follow those students, right?
Yes, once they come there, those, all those funds go directly to each individual young person that is in the program. Basically, we're giving away a scholarship because as far as a cost, we invest up to $18,000 per young person, and we can take up to 140 of them per cycle. These funds are already in place. Matter of fact, we already in current cycle 47, I mean 48, when we do 49, those funds are already in place because this is a national program. There are 44, no, there are 47 Youth Challenge Academies throughout the United States, and there are 33 states that hold them. California, Texas, North Carolina, because they're so large, they actually have two programs. And we're trying to get to that point where we have one low country, one upper state, but we're not at that level yet because of the population. But that's what's going on. This is a national program, and all the funds are already in place, and when we start our cycles, Governor McMaster, his communication with Major General McCarthy, they take care of that other 25% that comes through our program.
Okay. You familiar with the Will Lu Gray?
Very familiar with the program.
From listening at you, it sounds similar. What would be the major difference between your program and the Will Lu Gray?
Will Lu Gray operates on a 14-week cycle. We operate on a 22-week cycle, and we just offer more because we have the facilities and the space. Like I said, we offer SERVE safe certification, we offer forklift certification. We have all these things in place that these young people can do right there, that they can bring back to y'all's community. On top of that, when they do graduate after that five and a half months residential phase of the program, we do a 12-month follow-up so that a young person, when they graduate our program, they still have access to their caseworkers, they still have access to their K, their counselors, they still have access to the Education Department. So if they lose anything, all they got to do is send us an email, because once they graduate, officially it's a year, unofficially it's basically a lifetime, because I have young people calling me from overseas that have joined the military, going on to college and things, and they still call me Sergeant Reese because I've been there that long where I used to be part of the cadre. So they're part of the program, once they're there, they come back, they go to the job challenge, it even further emphasizes it, and if the kid comes and participates, male and female, every six year, every six months, we give them a stipend as part of their follow-up. All they got to do is let us know if they're going to school, if they're in the military, if they're working, or whatever. We have a follow-up stipend that we, we give them, it's a, basically it's $600 every, no, $300 every six months, because it helps them when they get back into the work, some of them don't have the funds they need, you know, for transportation, maybe to get that suit and tie, because we teach them things like how to wear a suit, how to wear a tie, teach the young ladies how to do interviews, how to get their hair done. So this program is all encompassing. Our staff is one of the most diverse staffs, any young person could be around, is more diverse than any high school in this state.
Okay.
Former military, half of, half of our staff are former military or still currently in the reserves.
Okay, you, this is 22 weeks for a program, right?
The, the program, the residential phase of the program is 22 weeks, 22 and a half weeks, yes.
Okay.
But the follow-up is 12 months. So they basically 17 and a half months that we will work with these young people.
I wish we could get you all to come here in Williamsburg County and just do one thing, get these young people to pull the pants up.
Be great. Mr. Woods, I'm going to tell you. I'm just going to leave it alone, I think that's, you'd be surprised at the things I have to hear and see and do, and it's critical because as many lives as we do save, I'm not going to sit here and confess and say that, you know, this program is perfect, it does all the right things we do, but bottom line is, it's, the young person has to volunteer.
Right.
They have to want us, let us help them, but it's no cost financially. The parents only have to pay for things of personal hygiene and athletic footwear because we, we train the mind and the body. They do physical training, we have obstacle courses, they have, it's a way of making them think about when they make a mistake. So if you make a mistake, you're going to give me 10 push-ups or something, you know, that type of thing, because it's quasi-military. Now, we're not a boot camp, and we're not DJJ.
Right.
So when they come in, they need to understand that this is not something that's forced on them, they have to want to make that change. And we do work with court systems. I work with pre-trial intervention all the time.
I think it's a great program.
Can y'all promise me that y'all put it on the website?
We will.
Thank you very much.
It's already probably done already.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Do you have any more flyers and, and stuff?
I have some more, here you go, sir.
If there are no other questions, we're going to go ahead and move to the next item. Thank you, I appreciate it. Next order of business is the supervisor's report, as some of you- As some of you may have heard or at least seen the signage on the door of county government facilities, we have imposed a mask ordinance that went into effect August 9, 2021, for county governmental facilities. According to DHEC, most of our cases that we had in July, among those are not, are those that are not vaccinated. There will be additional restrictions that will be imposed by the county over the next 24 hours. From the weeks of 8/8, 2021, and 8/4, 2081, we had approximately five deaths, and those age ranges between 35 to 64. The situation is getting worse and getting more serious, and it's also beginning to impact the county government employees as well. We will need to take some serious, take a look carefully at shifting our response to more of a, just basically just waiting by for something to happen, to now a more proactive approach to dealing with the new insurgent of COVID-19. However, we will keep everyone posted in the next few days. Mr. Jenkins and I are working together to develop our next plan for our county. We are also sending out an RFP for a new auditing company. Ms. Robin Poston will be providing her expertise and assisting us with some of the audit, but we are getting a new auditing company for Williamsburg County. Also, Labor Day holiday is on a Monday, which is a council meeting date. I will need approval from the body to cancel that meeting in the form of a motion.
Motion to counsel that, that meeting that falls on our meeting day of Labor Day.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of us canceling the next council meeting that's scheduled on Labor Day, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. Also, update, Mr. Lee, you will like this update. Saki Bridge, Saki Bridge, this bridge has been out ever since Hurricane Florence made way to Williamsburg County. The update is that we are approved to go to the next phase, which means I will be preparing a new scope of work this week that will be due to the state by the end of this week as to the progression. Once it gets to the state for their approval, then it will be passed on to FEMA, so. Yes, sir, I will. So you will see the scope of work in detail, so I have to wait on just one more document from the engineer, but we're forward-moving with the project. Yes, sir. Now, we've come to that great time during our council meeting, so we are ready to adjourn. Any motion for that?
To move, Madam Supervisor.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjournment, please stand up and have a great day. Thank you, Williamsburg County citizens and Williamsburg County staff.